Okay, it is 6:04 PM on November the 28th. I'd like to call the meeting of the Woodbury Select Board to order. Any adjustments to the Select Board agenda?
I don't have any.
Michael, none? Mr. Dango? Okay. We are now open for public comment.
Winner has become.
You're all on the agenda, so...
Okay, we have bills and payroll orders that are partially approved and the rest will be finished after the meeting is complete, along with minutes from the previous meeting.
And the meeting before that.
And the meeting before that. The October 24th meeting and the November 14th meeting will be approved afterwards. Mrs. Turkey, can we do the town clerk's report, please?
Yes. We have gotten the agreement with Brookfield Services for the generator that needs to be signed off by the Select Board. And you have a choice of a one-year or two-years by the law.
What's the difference?
Price.
Is it more than twice as much?
Well, actually, no, it's...
Oh, you've seen it?
Yeah, this is...
The two-year is more economical.
Actually, it's two visits a year, not two years. So they would come, and it's kind of described in the cover letter, but they could come once a year or twice a year. And the difference is about $160. From $419 for one visit, an annual major service visit, and then two visits is $683. And I think the last time we went with two years just because of what happened one time when the winter and the...
We had a sensor die and then we had to have an emergency service call.
Yeah, and the thing, the generator didn't work.
Just didn't work at all.
So that was two visits a year?
For $683.
So we didn't have to pay an emergency visit because we already had...
We did.
We did because we didn't have the two-year contract.
Oh, well. What do you think about that, Larry?
For years, we always carried the two-year.
Twice a year?
Twice a year. It really makes a difference. One year, they really do a complete go-through, change oil, do anything that needs to be done. The next time, they just tune things up and make sure that everything is working. And they usually time it so that they come right around Christmas time, so it's kind of covered for the winter.
Okay, well, I guess I'll move that we approve that for twice a year for...
So there's a motion to approve from Diana to Harris' second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we're making a two-year commitment to Brookfield Service for work on our general generator, our Generac.
And the total for that was, what, $683?
$683. Actually, $649 if we go ahead and move on this and do something about it before the 5th of December, which we have a window.
Yeah.
You could make that work, so it's even more economical if we act on it quickly.
Tom will be in on Monday if...
Tom is not available this Sunday.
Oh, so Brandy might or might not, so we might or might not be able to make that.
Well, we'll see.
Yeah, so...
It's worth a shot.
Maybe we could let them know that we approved it, but we just don't have the...
A way to...
Our treasurer is not available.
A way to actually get some money.
Yeah, they might be sympathetic.
We'll see.
I'm sure she'd be able to walk one of us through it over the telephone to get it paid.
Okay. I could drop a check off. I have to literally drive by the place on my way to work.
You do, that's right.
Literally.
I know where it is.
So, we could make this work if we were able to cut a check.
See, $100.
Can't hurt us. Mrs. Turkey, please continue.
And we also got an email from Lucian Avery concerned about Nichols Pond.
Okay.
There is a new fence up there.
Right. Yep. I am happy to give them a call about that. I know some of the particulars of that and have sort of been anticipating that somebody might be wondering about that.
It's like a gate?
It's a gate.
Yeah, it's a great big, like a farmhouse gate.
If you want me to explain the situation there, I'm happy to do it if you want to take...
I got enough for each one of you. Come on.
I think you should.
So...
Need one more?
We'll take one more. Thank you, ma'am.
So, the folks who own Cahagan, which is basically the Meyer family, they are contending and other camp owners agree with them that the road that's been used historically down to the dam is a private road. And there is an old town road that also goes down to the dam, or comes out below the dam that they have spent the summer fixing up, which will become, according to the Meyer family, the new access to the dam. They've been communicating with Fish and Wildlife about that.
So who is "they"? Is that Myers family?
The Meyer and our family, yeah.
So there are two roads that go down to the dam from...
There are two roads now. There used to be an old road, the original road down to the dam, and in fact, it probably was originally a road before there was even a dam there, because there used to be a village down below Nichols Pond that used water power. So this is a very, very old road. We looked at it back when Gary Ewen was the road foreman with the thought of having that become the access to the dam, and it was just, you know, Gary said it would cost too much money, you know, so it never happened. But the Meyer family, John Meyer is the one that has always stated that the road that has been used for many, many years that goes down to the dam is a private road. I've asked him for proof of that, which I've never received, and I haven't even tried to look in the town records to see. You know, I don't know when the road was built. It's been a road ever since I was a kid going up there and that's starting in the early 50s, 1950s. So anyway, and last winter was the first year that Nichols Pond was open for ice fishing, so people would drive down the road and park, or either park up at the top of the hill where this gate is, and then they were crossing camp owner's property to get onto the pond. And some of the camp owners were upset about that rather than using the dam, which is the fishing access. So that's kind of what started this.
I'm sorry, was it open for ice fishing? Why wouldn't it have been open for ice fishing?
Nichols Pond, East Long Pond have been closed for ice fishing for years.
Really?
Yeah. And last year was the first year that it was open. Fish and Wildlife opened it up for ice fishing. So it did create a bunch of problems. There's also the perennial summer partying on the dam. So it's mostly Hardwick area people that are there, and there's no enforcement. So, you know, I'm kind of assuming that somebody will challenge this. It does look like Lucian is at least aware of it. It is listed on the town road maps as a Class 4 road, which, according to the Meyer family, is not true. And I question it myself because there's a part of a road that's more of a driveway to a couple of camps that's also listed as a Class 4 road, and I know that's not true. And those state maps that we get, I think they're based on information that the towns give them rather than what's actually true or not. And again, finding out in the town records if it is a Class 4 road would probably be a piece of work.
Quite a way to say it.
So that's what this is about. It's basically to try to limit the use of the dam in the summertime to have people who want a winter access to the pond to use this new road. And the summer access would also be using this new road that the Meyer family, you know, kind of upgraded this very old historical road. And they have a, they've been working a thing out with Fish and Wildlife so that it would become a primitive boat access, which means that people would have to carry to get onto the water, which is primarily what happens now. It's pretty much a canoe kayak, a small fishing boat pond. I have a camp there also, that's why I know all about this stuff. So, yeah, so that's what's going on there.
So the gate that's been there forever, were they closing that in the winter?
There was a gate further down the road at the bottom of the hill. This is right at the top of the hill as you turn off the Nichols Pond road. This is the gate, the road that's closed is the Nichols Dam road, and then the Nichols Pond road goes up to this. So there was a gate halfway down the Nichols Dam road that the camp owners put up, and it was never locked, but it would give people the time, like there was a curfew time set at the dam, you know, whatever trash you carry in, please carry out, no fires, et cetera, you know, so there was a sign on there. And pretty much in the summertime, it was open all the time. Sometimes a couple of the camp owners close to the dam would go up, let the people know on the dam that, okay, it's time to go home now. And then if they left, which often they didn't, they would go close the gate. And I assume that this gate would not be locked. So this is, I guess you could say it might be a pent road at this point, although they haven't, we haven't determined that as a town.
No, that's an official thing.
Yeah.
And they haven't asked to have it... Well, they can't ask if they don't admit, you know, if their position is, if it's not a town road, then they can't ask to have it.
Their position is the first, their road. And, you know, there is a clause, I'm not going to be able to remember, but it's something about use, and maybe Alfie, you know that term, where a road that's been used publicly for so many years, and if a town has worked on it, there's a, kind of like a two-word term for that status of that road.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the term, but I know that there is, there is laws that protect the town. If they have serviced it or done maintenance to it within a certain amount of time, I think it's like seven or 10 years, then they...
Is that called, I'm just going to chime in real quick, is that called prescriptive rights or adverse possession?
It's not called, I think you're close, but that doesn't ring a bell in my memory. It's like a two-word term, something and something, something. That's great. So, that's not much help. Paul Gillis did instruct me on this at one point in the distance past, and I think actually Norm Edkin is a, and Norm has a camp up here too. And I would mention that he's called me about this and is a little bit concerned.
Let's also say something we're going to hear a bit more about.
Right.
Robin, did, remember that guy, it was only like a month ago, there was a guy in the vault who offered to send a bunch of links to information that he got from the State V-Trans website about some old roads. Did you ever get that?
Did not get that.
Oh, okay. I don't even remember who it was.
You know, and technically this, oh, sorry, sorry.
I'm trying to remember who said that.
It was, yeah, it was, I think it was those two guys that are surveying that.
Oh, and then it was Philo.
Okay, yeah. There you go.
So, and the road that the Meyer family fixed up, you know, that probably was a town road sometime in the distant past, but it was never on any maps as a Class 4 road, so technically I think it would be considered a historical road, which, you know, Woodbury chose not to claim any of those a long time ago. So it's basically a private, that is a private road also, and it goes back to the people whose property it crosses, and of course, all of the people that, whose property this road crosses are all camp owners at Nichols, and so they all were pretty much on board on having this road fixed up.
So the second road is also over camp properties?
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, some of the people that own camps there own a, you know, pretty big chunk of land away from the pond. The Woodcums and the Meyer family. Yeah, most of the property was on the Meyer family. So shall we just wait? I will respond to Lucian.
Did he say what his issue was?
Well...
Just curious?
I was up at Nichols Pond a couple of days ago and there was a new closed gate blocking the way. I attached an image, I'm concerned about public access.
Concerned about public access, okay.
I can't find any policies about road closures on your website, but I did see that it is listed as a Class 4 road in the roadmap.
Okay.
The road sign also says it is a private road.
Okay, so we just...
So it's a, I mean, for me, the issue is, is that the Meyer family for many, many years has claimed it's a private road. I've never seen any proof of that in any town records, and the town has it on its map as a Class 4 road, but chances are, if we were to look on our records to see if it actually was a Class 4 road, I doubt there would be anything there.
Any record of its designation.
But maybe. And also, you know, it's been a road that's been used by the public...
For decades.
For decades, yeah. Let's say, in my knowledge, from 1950 on, which was 70-plus years ago now.
With relation to this row, this existing Nichols Camp Road, where is this new road to the...
It's probably about...
Towards Hardwick or...
No, it's in Woodbury.
No, I mean, is it in the direction of Hardwick?
Yes, about 25 yards away from where that gate is. And I believe there's going to, there's a gate there too. It's a snowmobile, it's a vast trail, at least down to the power line.
It's part of the vast system.
And that's not the turnaround?
No.
No.
Okay.
Actually, the, where this gated is sort of the turnaround.
That's what I mean, the gate...
The town highly turnaround?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a gate there too.
That's way down at the beginning of the Nichols Pond.
Okay, okay.
It's not adjacent to that.
Alfie, are we plowing that road now?
My understanding is that Hardwick is...
We'll continue.
Because it's just a short distance, and they have to be there anyways.
And they have to turn around.
Yeah, it's a Hardwick road for a short stretch.
It is.
Yeah. So while I have tensions on me, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
The ref, where it references the map, the town map, is that the state map? So is this registered, this road registered as a Class 4 with the state?
Yes. I think it is.
It's on the town, it's on the, it's on the state atlas viewer as a Class 4 road.
So I would say that it's a Class 4.
Yeah, would be the immediate assumption. I agree. But apparently their claim to being a private road goes back quite a ways.
Well, I don't know where they're claiming, you know, I've never been shown any kind of legal or historical or town record or anything that, you know, that they base their opinion on. My assumption is that the road was built to allow Hardwick Electric access to the dam.
To the dam. Okay. We'll have to do more with it, but let's, if you don't mind reaching out directly to Lucian, that would be a good start. Can't explain exactly the conversation.
And maybe Alfie, I'll talk to you a little bit just to figure out who I can get a hold of from the state, I mean, just to try to find out if it is registered.
It shows up on the atlas viewer.
Yeah, and it's on the map that we get from V-Trans.
And it's registered. So there's a record of it being classified as a Class 4.
Well, that's the thing, I don't know if there is a record.
Well, if it's on the map, where did it come from?
If it's on the state map, that's a pretty reasonable reference point.
Yeah, well, I'm not really sure why this driveway that I know about that's also on that map as a Class 4 road, I'm not sure why that is on there either.
Yeah, there are several such driveways.
I suspect some confused information, but...
Robin, could you try to remember who that guy was and see if, do they still come in?
There's one or two different guys. Kelly and might have said something about it too, and he's in there tomorrow, so I will check with him.
Yeah, I think he said that, yeah, I think he said the information came from V-Trans records somewhere, that he had a bunch of things he could just send the...
It almost seemed like it was Philo and Rob that were in there when we were talking about that.
Rob was. Okay, thanks.
And I think there is some stuff, legal stuff about actual public use, the fact that it's been used so publicly that...
That it's become right of way?
Yeah. There's another legal term for that that I can't remember.
All right. Mrs. Turkey, please continue.
That's about all I have. Other than water system and the school, and I think that's why Larry and Ann are here, so I'll give it to them.
Sounds good. Okay, so Ms. Smith is not here, so we're not going to do the town treasurer's report, And we'll have to wait on her discussion of preparations of the FY '24 budget as well.
We could talk a little bit about that. I had, I just had wanted to share that in the past, for the town highway part of the budget, that I would meet with, usually meet with Greg or Greg and Chuck have sort of done it the last couple of years, but we could ask the highway, you know, Alfie to put together a proposed budget for the highway part of it, and then usually what would happen is that they would come to one of the budget meetings and they'd just go over it and, you know, discuss and approve what they've come up with for figures.
I seem to recall Brandy sitting down with Greg and just going line by line, how much do you think you're going to need for tractor repairs this year compared to last year? So when she gets back, maybe she can give us an updated status of what's where in the different accounts.
Okay. Do we know if Brandy's going to be available to do this?
As of right now, we don't know.
Okay, so what happens if she isn't?
Well, Tom told me this morning that he is more than willing to still do the part that he has done in the past. That's with the delinquent taxes and there's three or four other ones there, the general fund probably.
Okay.
So he could probably print out, you know, that report that Brandy used to give us at every meeting.
Right. There's a certain budget that she gives us that has, you know, a final column for putting in the proposed amounts.
Well, that would be nice too, but...
Yeah. Well, I'm sure that's somewhere on the computer that Tom could find for us. So should we try to schedule some meetings, or do we want to wait till after our next December, our first December meeting? I mean, I think we should try to work on this whether Brandy's available or not.
It seems like we should be acting on it sooner rather than later. I think we should try to schedule some meetings to at least get started on this.
Okay.
Because I can almost spell Penny at memorably, and she can...
Okay. You know, I mean, like, like last year, you and Brandy, and I, probably Diana was involved too, did kind of do the general budget, you know, for the, for the town.
Yes.
Came up with figures. And then Alfie, Greg could kind of think about what they would be needing, you know. Having a budget to look at, if we could get that form that has a column for the fiscal year 24, then, you know, you guys could kind of put in what you're thinking you would
The one she gives us is called a comparative budget report, and it has FY '22 budget, the actual paid to date, oh, the actual budget for 2022, the actual 2022, the budget for FY '23, and how much we've spent, well, in this case, it would only be like July, so five months.
Yeah.
And then we can, there's a blank space.
There is a blank space that we can fill, and what she gives us to work on the budget with is this comparative budget report, and then there's a column to the far right where that space is for fiscal year 2024 for us to fill, fill in, and then, you know, usually what we do is kind of compare the past years, and so...
So, do you want to...
We can, we can use what we have.
We have.
And we usually wait till December because then we have like half a year to go by.
And then there's always a last-minute rush to get it ready for the town report.
Right. Yeah, it's all a last-minute rush. With, you know, usually a few special meetings to get it worked out. So we could technically work with this.
It's a good starting place.
Yeah.
Is it too aggressive to try to just meet next Monday?
I can't meet next Monday, I have another meeting.
Okay. We have our next Select Board meeting on the 12th.
Yeah. We could, depending on what else is on the agenda, I think, in my experience with a Select Board in the past, it was usually pretty hard to actually work on the budget during one of the scheduled monthly Select Board meetings. I agree, have special meetings.
Well, there's also Tuesday and Wednesday next week. I have something Thursday night already.
Tuesday or Wednesday would work for me.
Tuesday the 6th? Let's do that. So we will have our first...
Working budget meeting.
Working budget planning meeting. At 6:00 PM?
Mm-hmm. And let's see, Robin has open hours that we could, we could actually meet at the town office.
That would be nice.
And then we would have our town clerk right next door, and maybe even Tom. I don't know, he probably doesn't come in on the evening hours.
No, he only comes in on Mondays.
Yeah, okay. But we would have Robin there.
And I can make it so we can block out any research next Tuesday night too.
Okay. Thank you. Usually there are too many people that come to the budget meeting.
Oh, so you're all welcome.
You'll have to sit in the outside room.
Okay, good. Mrs. Turkey, anything else?
No.
All right, well, we're a little late, but, Ms. Koteki?
Yes.
Would you mind giving, giving your initial introduction to this for us?
Sure, thank you. My name is Karen Koteki, and I'm doing the Eastman acquisition and permit acquisition for Seabee Fiber and its territory. As you know, they're getting, gearing up to deploy high-speed internet in the Manasapales, including Woodbury. They've, concerning the locations that I've submitted to you already, we went over, Michael, your questions and comments and various questions from the board, and so just let me start by saying that in each of the 250-plus Manasapales in Vermont, each one does, you know, things slightly different. So my initial outreach to you is to kind of just see what I needed to do in terms of getting permits for any underground installation, and now here we are. And so thank you for allowing me to attend tonight. When our engineering firm looks, they look online at the pole locations, we're getting licenses to attach to... When our engineering firm looks, uh, they look online at the pole locations, we're getting licenses to attach to the pole-owning entities. It could be, you know, Great Mountain Power, Washington Electric, Hardwick Electric, and including Consolidated Communications. Most of the power companies do have their poles online, we have, we, we can go on the G.I.S. and we can see where the poles are located. Unfortunately, Consolidated doesn't not have that kind of system. So in some cases, we may have asked for underground where indeed the C.C.I. poles are located, and if that's the case, we will certainly attach to their poles as long as they're sufficient. And if they're not, they would have to, you know, replace them with taller poles so that we could attach. In the, in the five locations that I sent you, we're gonna withdraw North, North, um, North Road.
North Road, yes.
Yeah, okay, so that, we're not gonna worry about that right now. The, the other roads, they did ask me to keep, uh, in front of you, and we will do a physical field assessment. I was hoping to get it done last week, but there were so many people on vacation because of the holiday.
Hmm.
So we will go out and look to see where we can attach to C.C.I., the C.C.I. poles, assuming they're there, there, you know, that, that there are poles there um, to attach to, and we can get licenses. For Rathburn Road, they've asked me to keep that as well in place. According to some of the folks that are local and that know that, that road, they, they believe that there probably aren't any poles there, and that we're gonna need to put some underground to get, yeah, to get to some of the, the homes. Scribner Road, same thing, they've asked me to keep. Keen Farm Road, um, we're gonna revise, we only have to go a certain amount of distance in our underground. Instead of six hundred feet, it's gonna be more likely like three hundred feet, but I will get, and we're gonna stop um, before going further up, I think it's called, um, Punk's.
Punkhorn Road.
Yeah, that's it. And then, um.
So you would go, even though there's only one house out there and they probably don't have power, you would still?
No, not necessarily, we would, we would have to assess it, and they are looking at the locations one by one as best they can. If there's a handful, they're gonna propose underground or aerial if they have poles. If, if there's only one, they'll, they'll need to reassess that.
Okay.
Um, Dog Pond Road, um, we are, so we are gonna be looking for, uh, the C.C.I. poles along that road, it's suspected that there might be poles there. Scribner Road as well, we're gonna do a field assessment. And I told you about Keen Farm, North Road we withdrew, and we're keeping Dog Pond and Rathburn. So, um, my question to you for Rathburn is, is that to me, on, for myself, my own looking at that online, it looks to me like it's, uh, it could be a private road, but is it indeed a municipal road that's maintained by, by the town?
It's not maintained by the town, no.
No.
Okay.
So is it a class four?
No, it's a private road.
It's not a town road.
Really?
It's a private road.
From where the whole, the whole of this from, okay.
It's got a sign, but it's private.
It goes into Nelson Pond.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so for that kind of thing, we would need easements from the landowners, not necessarily a permit, uh, you know, from, from you, folks, if you don't maintain that road. So typically what I've done for the other, I'm also working for the, another C.U.D.E. in, in the northeast kingdom, what, what I've been doing is reaching out to the highway departments, to the road commissioners, and asking point-blank, you know, do we need a permit, what do we need to do? And meeting with them in person and kind of going and driving the, the underground road locations, and Alfie, I'm happy to do that with you, or I can send one of the construction guys out with you, just to make sure that you're in agreement with any of those underground locations where we're, we're proposing to install.
Sure, just give me a call and we'll set something up.
So my question is, do you want me to come back? I didn't wanna not, I didn't wanna cancel tonight, cause I really wanted to get it in front of you and talk, talk about the process and understand better what the town is, is, you know, requires. And then we can come back and give you, you know, the, the more definite locations where we definitely need, need Alfie to, to end the select board to sign off.
Well, do you, are you sort of looking for kind of like a general permission from the select board to, in order to get the permit process started and in order to get the implementation started or?
Just, yeah, for example, um, let's just talk Salisbury, Vermont, they don't require anything. They just, they just, they don't require anything. But, you know, um, Callis, Woodbury, um, um, Barnet, those types of places. I, I call ahead and, and they'll say, yep, the select board has to approve the locations, and that's what I've understood Woodbury needs to do, you need to approve the, uh, once Alfie has the chance to review and, and approve, that the select board actually has to sign off on something to say, yes, C.B. Fiber, you can locate your, your, your conduits in town right of way.
I don't, do we have to do that?
We don't have a, we don't have a form or anything, we just, I've always said that
It has to come before the state board.
if you're working in the town right of way, you, or in a town road, you need to get the town's permission.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so, um, does that include aerial too when we're attaching to licensed poles?
No.
Or do you not care as much? I didn't think so.
Somebody else is right away.
Yeah.
Okay. So just the underground, correct?
Yeah.
So, so it sounds to me like Alfie, I'll get with you if that's okay, and we'll get, we'll ride the locations, and then I come back and Alfie can give his input, and then, then you would just, you know, verbally say to me, like we're doing right now, and say, okay, you've got the, you've got the okay.
It's, it's.
Or do we even need, do we need to?
I was just gonna say, as far as I'm concerned, if Alfie okay's it, you don't need a select board approval.
Okay.
I mean, that's my personal take on this situation.
Yeah.
But I don't know how yours.
And that's happened in many, many of the other municipalities that I'm working in, but again, I don't wanna take anything for granted, and so I've been reaching out to each select board or, or highway department to find out what exactly is the process. And for the most part, there isn't a formal process, you're absolutely right, but I, again, we just wanna make sure we've got all our, you know, I's dotted and T's crossed.
Well, what we do with access permits is, once the road commissioner has approved it, the select board still has to sign off on it. So would you prefer that we do it that way, Alfie, or?
Well, I think either way is good for me.
Okay.
I just, um, I'm just recalling a conversation that I had with Greg, the ex-road commissioner, and he tells me that there is a right-of-way permit.
Yeah.
So I, I think we might wanna just verify that.
Let's be careful, yeah.
Yeah.
If there is one in place, then we need to, you know, it would be up to the select board to make that decision.
Make that decision.
Maybe Rob, Robin can look around in the file cabinet, see if there's, she can find something.
Yeah, if there's a previous one that was issued.
I'm, I'm happy to.
Karen, I'm curious as to whether those four or five roads are the only ones that you think underground is gonna be needed, or is that just a start?
No, I, no, it, um, okay, so, no, that should be all Woodbury, cause we're going by town, right? We're starting, but now that said, we may have to come back if somebody applies for service where we don't have any, any fiber yet, right?
Okay.
That would, yeah, require
Sure.
a follow-up. Um, but that, in, in some respects, I maybe jumped the gun here, but again, C.B. Fiber's, that, you know, they're, they're, they wanna start construction, they're starting in Callis as far as I know right now, and they're gonna work their way, and, and into Woodbury is one of the first towns as well, so that's why I'm here. I, I just, you know, and, and we've asked the engineering firm to identify all of the underground locations that we're proposing in Woodbury at this time, and again, there, there may be amendments, but that's, that's all I know at this time.
So when you're doing your field work, you and Alfie, the Scribner Road one is also very confusing to me, because once you get up to the last houses, like nothing for a long way until you get over to Logtown. I can't believe there are not poles all the way around Cranberry Middle Road.
Yes, I saw your email, and again, we'll be, we'll be doing that.
Look at that, okay.
We'll have, I'm gonna have our construction and engineering folks to do that, hopefully this week, so I can have a better feel, and then I can get, get with you, Alfie.
Okay.
So I just have a question for the other select board members, what if there is no town highway, a right-of-way permit? What if we can't find one?
We just.
That comes back to us.
I've never, I've never seen one.
No, I never have either, and I don't think we have much of a road policy handbook or anything like that, so that'd be nice.
I can, I can create one for you because I have.
Oh, good, more paperwork.
Or we can put it in the minutes, you know.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a simple form, you know, a, a access permit, like you said, and then, um, you know, the select board members sign it, and, and after it's been renewed in the field, and I would list the, the streets, the roads, and, and the footages, and would go from there, and that way, and then it gets recorded, and that way you have a, a document, so you know where the underground locations are as well.
So maybe the access permit form covers that too, I don't know, I haven't looked at it for a long time, so.
Yeah, I'll look at it online, if it's online, I.
I doubt it.
I doubt it.
Okay.
Alfie?
So one question I had for Karen is, uh, something that came up in the last select board meeting was about DigSafe. Are, are you registered with DigSafe? Uh, if you put underground in the, in our roads, are you registered with DigSafe?
Absolutely, we are, and we would call DigSafe, in fact, we've already called them on some of our sites, our, um, our, our O.L.T. sites, optical terminal sites.
Well, I mean more so for if, if, if there's a contract of digging our road up in the future, are your lines registered with DigSafe to be, to be labeled or, or found?
Yes, they, they are, but I will get you confirmation with, with an email with that, so you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So do we wanna create a permit so that, um, there's a written record?
She said she might have one.
Oh, I do, I have, I have several samples, I'm happy to send them, I can send it to you, Michael, if you'd like, and then you can share and.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll send it in like a Word document, so you can, um,
Change it to the home name.
you know, revise them, yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
You're very welcome.
The more documentation we have over this, the better off we're going to be, in some ways.
I absolutely agree, um, and so I appreciate your time tonight, and Alfie, I'll get with you once I've had the field, field people, you know, do the field review, and then, um, I'll have a, a better, um, you know, idea on exactly where we need to go. And, uh, Michael, I will look for some, uh, some past permits and some that I've even created and send them to you, and you can just take your pick.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you, Karen, have a good night.
You too, thanks.
All right.
So I'll leave that on in case Chuck shows up.
Yep, sounds good. But, uh, we're running a bit behind. Alfie, are you up for just doing road report?
Sure. Just keep. Don't have a lot.
Carrying on, carrying on, carrying on.
We have had a little bit of winter. But I think we've kept up with it so far. Good news is Greg is back from his vacation. So we are fully staffed, and, um, trucks are all working fine, everything seems to be running along smooth. Uh, an update on, just for your information, the, the truck that got rolled over, I am working on hiring a mechanic to swap the motors from the one, cause the mo, the truck that got rolled over was, has a really good motor in it. We have a problem with the other truck, they're identical, so it's an easy swap.
So the, when you say the other truck, you mean the one that they went and bought, uh, bought for that purpose?
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
That's correct, yep, yep, uh, there's a motor problem with that, so it just seems logical to swap the motor out, and then we can, that truck is typically used for chloride and a spare truck in there if, if one-on-one fails, so. Uh, working on getting somebody lined up for that.
They would come and do it on-site, probably, in your garage?
I'm hoping that they would do it right on-site, yes, and then we could help out wherever we could to try to save, save costs. So that's in the works, don't know as far as timing and all that, but, uh, just so you guys know where my head is with that.
Sounds very reasonable.
It just seems like the logical thing to do.
It does.
Yeah, and then we can get rid of the rest of that sort of bad memory. Other than that, I think everything is going along smooth.
We're good on chloride and sand at this point?
Yeah, salt has been delivered with all that, uh, salt is, is fully stocked, like I said, trucks are, trucks are holding together just fine. But as you know, things break down, and we have to act as quick as we can to get them back going.
Gotcha. Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me, too.
Any, any complaints that I need to know about, or?
I have not heard any.
Try to get those to you as soon as possible.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we try to send those to you quickly.
Robin's got a lot more to bring along.
Honestly, I, I just wanna stay on top of it, if there is an issue, I wanna be able to, uh, conquer it right.
Yeah. I think I did pass on an email from one of your neighbors a couple of weeks ago about uh, truck idling or something, but, which is a.
Oh.
You mean one of the neighbors of the town garage?
Yeah.
Oh.
I sent it to the town garage, so.
Okay, well, I'm wondering about that, if
Okay.
we should change the, the name on that, the email on that?
Mm-hmm.
Because I'm, I'm not sure that I'm getting those.
Uh-huh.
Mm-hmm.
It got changed when the town clerk and town treasurer changed their email addresses. But yeah, if you aren't getting them, um, we should try to figure out why not, why that's happening.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm happy to respond to emails, but I, and fix whatever problem there is, but I just need to know it, if I can't get the email.
Okay.
Is that the same complaint that came in last year?
Uh, well, it's a neighbor that does frequently complain about the town garage.
That, so I think that we, we were told at one time that, that the loader is like constantly running all day long, is that true? Even when nobody's there, or nobody using?
Incidentally, I am learning of that as, as past prac, practices, that will not continue. I, I can't see the logic in that.
Seems wasteful.
I, I am also working on, um, ways of getting the loader inside, right now it stays outside year-round. And it's, I just know it's not good for that hydraulic system to be out in the cold.
Yeah.
I mean, it's plugged in, the motor starts, it's fine, but that hydraulic oil is still cold. So I'm gonna try to figure out a way to get it inside, uh, even if I have to put the five-fifty outside.
So you have three bays?
We have four total.
Four, oh, okay.
Uh, three are occupied by trucks that go out every day.
Three trucks, oh, including the five-fifty?
Uh, no, the five-fifty, the five-fifty could easily be outside
Oh, the, oh, okay, the low throw, okay, yeah, okay.
in my opinion, because you can just cover the salt.
Mm-hmm.
It's just the, the, the V-box in the back, just cover that, keep the water off of it.
Yeah.
It's just changes that I need to kind of work in slowly without making aggravation, and it's just the process, so. Uh, but, but I, the loader idling will not continue.
Oh, good.
Um, sometimes when it's super cold, I get that, it has to run, but it doesn't have to run all day, every day, especially when it's as warm as it has been. So I think I can address that issue very well.
Okay, great, thank you.
I don't know if the public is allowed to make a comment.
Of course, I think.
Now, but I'd just like to thank you all for your work, I've noted how well the roads have been here for during those spells of icy, like crossing town lines, and I'm like, oh, Woodbury was out, but this town hasn't been out yet, so, thank you.
Appreciate the implication of that, actually.
So maybe I'll try sending you an email tomorrow morning, or
Yeah.
and, you know, you can let me know if you got it or not. I probably, I probably deleted that email that came to me. Otherwise I'd try forwarding it again, but.
I'm assuming that email is referenced to the loader running.
Something running, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't, yeah, this was really before winter hit, so.
Oh.
Yeah. I'll look, I might still have it.
That was, that was the complaint that came in last year, was about the loader running
Yeah.
all the time.
And this particular neighbor has complained about the backup beepers, and I did try to explain to them that that's federal law or whatever.
Yeah, that's a tough one to get around. That is a safety feature that really needs to be
Needs to be there.
to be there, yeah, yeah.
Cause on that paper we get, was it Ben that set up our emails for us?
Ben Witt, yes.
Cause I noticed that the garage's email is dot O.R.T.
What?
on there, instead of O.R.G.
Well, that's a typo then.
That's what I was taking it at, but maybe that's the way it was. That's what I was taking it at, but maybe that's the way it was built.
That'd be a question for Ben Witt, I guess.
I mean, if he's not getting the emails.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Well, honestly, I look at the email very often. I'm like, where is everybody? There's nobody communicating, so... Only because my previous deployment was, I mean, I got 10 or 15, sometimes 20 emails a day and I'm getting zero here now, so I'm just like, why? What is it?
Well, let's get to the bottom of that.
I'm just assuming that there are no complaints, so that's...
So far, so good. Yeah, I actually kind of like it when I open up my computer and there's nothing.
So that's something that we...
Okay, I guess we better figure that out.
Happy to bring the computer or whatever it takes to...
And we had talked about trying the other accessory town computer and having one for you separately. So maybe we can try to do that all in one go. Just make a date. And go to the town office and see if we can't figure it out so that there's one for the shop and there's one for you. And I'll send a test email tomorrow morning before you get there. You can see if it's there.
And the one that you said was the town's, the select board's computer, is that that one or?
No, that's my computer.
Yeah, but the other one that wouldn't work with this?
It wouldn't work, but it would freeze up right in the middle of something and then you were stuck.
Where is that?
It's in the old select board meeting room.
Oh, okay.
The Lister room.
Lister room.
It's in a case. Yeah, I don't want to deal with it anymore, so I just use my own.
So just give it to Alfie.
It might, yeah. It's not exactly what I meant. A big hammer is what I kind of wanted to use.
Let's try it.
I think for email and for internet, it's going to be fine. I think that it was a driver problem. It would usually freeze up during something like this and I couldn't just shut the computer off without, you know...
Losing everything?
Losing everything, you know, shutting the meeting down and stuff, so there was nothing I could do. It happened to me twice.
And this past weekend, I took the clerk's laptop home so I could get on the air throughout the long weekend and see if there was anything that needed to be forwarded to anybody and I didn't have anything. So that's what I plan on doing, at least through the winter time, is taking that home on Thursdays with me.
That was great.
Then feel free to call my number, my cell phone number or my personal email, whichever. If there's an issue on the roads, I need to know about it, want to know about it.
Right. And you did get hold of the state police, you gave them your name for Woodbury?
I have not done that, I will add that to my list. But, because they probably still think that I'm working for Calis, I'm guessing. At this point, but I'll get them quit on my...
They know where to find you.
Yeah, that's right, right. So if nothing else for me...
Nothing for me. Thanks, sir, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Woodbury Library Board is on to talk about their 24 budget requests and their O S U E S D request for a fire alarm system in the library. Yeah, that's coming from the school, not the library. Right, no. We kind of lumped them together.
So you were just wanting to be on for the budget request, right? Is that what you, are you here for that too?
Most part.
Okay, so we can leave that other complicated stuff.
Leave that other stuff behind for now.
So you want, go ahead.
Okay, so we would like, so I'm Terry Eldredge and this is Stephen Murphy, and we would like to request an additional $4,000 to the town appropriation for fiscal year '24.
An additional, sorry.
So our total amount we would like to request for fiscal year '24 is $18,000. For fiscal year '23, we have an appropriation amount of $14,000. And we're requesting this amount because our Eleanor Angel Fund is about run out, so we need to balance that out. So it would be primarily used for the payroll of our library director and other daily expenses.
Do you, shoot. The latest record I have, which was be the end of July 2020, we've had a substantial fund balance. But that, I think, was before you, did I get the right report? I don't know. That was before you paid all that money for the roof.
Yeah, that was a big chunk.
So do you have any idea what the fund balance is now?
Last time I checked it was like 2,065.
You're kidding me? Wow, it was like $33,683?
Well, the roof took a...
That's like $19,000.
Roof took a big, yeah, it was a huge hit. It's a huge hit. So, yeah, in the last financial report that we got from Brandy, the library reserve fund is at $5,137.47. So I'm sure it's dropped since then.
So all the money you saved for not paying the library director all those months when we couldn't have one or it was closed or something, that all probably went to pay for that roof replacement.
We're budgeting for payroll, looking ahead. There was a period where we had no director and we saved on payroll through the volunteer efforts of Sarah and Laura, trustees who filled in the shifts and kept the library running. Thankfully, we have a director now and we're anticipating a full payroll going ahead.
But still the same amount of hours?
Yeah, about 60 a month.
And you've also requested $10,000 from ARPA with, do you still think you need that? Or what would that go towards?
My understanding of that ARPA request is that, of course, with the pandemic, there was no pie breakfast.
Right, right, I know.
So it's like lost revenue from the pandemic. From fundraising that couldn't occur.
But still, they have what they have now and they're kind of starting from what they have now. If you had another $10,000, would that be used for additional programming or just to...
I think it would have to be. I think ARPA has to be used for specific programming needs, so we couldn't use it for payroll or anything like that.
I don't think there's any restrictions on the ARPA money. Yep, they've released all those restrictions. Is it above $3 million or a million dollars? Which, we're not going to get there, we don't have it. So I don't think that's a concern. I don't think you have to worry about how you spend any of the ARPA money that you receive. But if it builds towards a budget that you can use for additional programming or to make sure that, looking forward with payroll, that you have that steady balance, right? So we're not coming and going back to increased expectations from town budget. I mean, it sounds like a reasonable use of ARPA funds for a very specific set of reasons. I'd like for them to have the flexibility to increase programming as need be.
So the $18,000, would that pretty much cover your annual expense if nothing special comes up? So you know that you're asking us to put this basically in the town report, which would have to be approved by the voters. You guys in favor of that?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I have no problem with it. I mean, it still has, it has to go before the town. But I have no reason not to put it before the town. Personally.
Is that a motion?
A motion to increase the Woodbury Library Fund budget by $4,000 for F O I '24 for the town meetings, for review at the town meeting. So this would be an agenda item for the town in the town meeting? Not the increase, just the total dollars.
Yeah. Over the last two or more years, because we were doing things with a paper ballot for town meeting, I think we eliminated a lot of the separate votes that we used to have, so I think we'll probably have to at one point have a conversation whether we want to go back and have those separate votes. But before, before ARPA, before COVID, we always used to have a separate line item for the library budget. Okay.
So, are we very clear on the motion? Can you say the motion again? Because I'm kind of wondering if that, the way you said it, sort of applies to having it go before the town to vote on it. Sounds like...
Which it does.
Well, it does have to go. It does have to go.
Okay.
We can't just give it out.
Yeah, sorry. So is there a second for?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll second it, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. So...
So we'll put you in...
The request is, will show up for town meeting. Thank you all, we appreciate it. I know I appreciate it. I like having a library in town, personally. I know my children like having a library in town, so, like I said, I'm biased.
And I think the library is probably very happy to have a treasurer now, so that's great. I know Brandy's happy with that.
I'd like to hear what the board has to say about this O S U E S D request.
Oh, the fire alarm thing.
I don't know what to do with this. I have some questions to ask to start out with, if you'd like. Do we have anybody who is Larry?
Larry Eldredge.
Oh, Larry.
Oh, I apologize.
I mean, I can give the select board a little background on this. I think I forwarded the information. So I was first contacted by Ann about an alarm system and for the, basically the annex room, but I mean, and it was in the proposal that the whole library is included. So did this come from some, and you mentioned that it was from an audit. I'm wondering, who was the entity that conducted the audit?
I don't know about any audit whatsoever. I can tell you how it all came about.
Okay, that's what I would like to hear.
When we were in discussion about building the outdoor pavilion down there, the fire marshal came, we had to file for a permit through the fire marshal's office, and he said that he demanded that we put fire alarm system into that annex, into the outdoor pavilion and tie it into the system.
In the outdoor building? The new building?
And in the process of all that, of course, having to get bids to what that was going to cost us to do that through a couple, three different outfits. And the easiest way to get that tied in was to obviously come up to this building, go across to down into the, where the electrical panel is here, which comes out of the electrical panel in there, so we could run it through the piping into the building. Through that process though, we discovered that with a lot of the new federal state rules and laws, if we change around or update that system in there, it very likely would fall into place that they would say, we have to bring that all up to the new federal standards, which are a bit ridiculous, like we say. You have to have all this enunciation, so when the fireman walks to the door, he can speak on a speaker, they go through the building. There's tremendous amount of money that's going to be involved in. But he also, but after meeting with him and going over and asking why there's a building that's down by the pond that's not connected to anything, need to be tied into a system, he finally changed his mind and said, no, you don't need to tie it in. But that had already brought up this whole thing of looking at this building has never been connected to anything. All it has is that was...
Smoke alarm, yeah.
Obviously, he, at that point, the fire marshal said, I do need to set up an appointment with me to come back and go through the school and all the buildings, see what needs to happen. I can guarantee you that he's going to say that this building needs to have fire protection that's tied in there, which then to thinking that whole other scenario. But what I did was I had a price of doing a standalone system here, which you could do without touching that building, and it would be a lot cheaper. The other thing to think about is obviously with this close contact, if this building did catch on fire in the middle of the night for some reason and the wind was blowing that direction, you could lose your school very quickly. So I think it's probably a, you know, time to have this happen. And that's where the cost, I mean, we can obviously get some other bids, but I can almost guarantee you it's going to run right around to $12,500 that could I shot pretty heavily to get that price.
So it wouldn't be, I mean, if you ever did a study of how many people use this building, how many hours a week, it would probably be pretty darn low. So it's not really about protecting lives, it's about...
It's property protection.
Protecting.
Students use...
So you're right, it's probably not protecting lives as such, but you've done $12,000 against the property loss of the whole building.
Yeah, that makes a little more sense to me.
Or if you prop, if you look at $12,000 based against maybe $80,000 to $100,000 to upgrade the whole system over there, it might be time to act, be proactive.
Just do it alone.
Maybe we can take that $10,000 that the library wants from ARPA. He's nodding.
And it does make sense to, I mean, now that I know where the, the, for this started from, I mean, I'm surprised that the town, I mean, the town insures this building and I'm surprised that the insurer has never brought that up. Because that is what happened at the town garage. We're still working on stuff. They did an audit and this is the L C T passive and, you know, demanded that the town have a fire alarm system there. Along with a number of others. So, because that's the main way that town highways, lots of equipment is through fire in the garage.
And it does get really tricky with the school being under O Z O's control and what we do there and this being under the town. It just makes it very, very difficult to figure out how to...
All these complications we create in Woodbury. Yeah, we made it difficult for ourselves in a lot of ways. We kept possession of our school.
Just to go on record, to tell you, you're still better off if you just sell that for a dollar. It makes life a lot easier for me.
Maybe we can talk about that the next time.
We did try to bring it up. We did bring it up a few times. I mean, this, to me, makes perfect sense. You know, this should be, we should have a fire alarm system on this building. It's amazing that we haven't had. Did you contact Mountain View Security?
No, because Mountain View no longer exists.
I know, they got bought out by somebody else.
Sea Coast, and we dealt with Sea Coast over there in the district. And I actually did away with them. Just so, the process of dealing with them to get them to respond, to get them to call us back, so now all three schools and O Z O's are taken care of by a more local company. Michael Eric, actually, sees it, does it. The price that however that...
Next, did you say?
Mick, Michael Eric, up in Weather Street.
Oh, okay.
But actually, the guy that does all the fire alarm installation is my next door neighbor, Preston Goome.
And it sounds like you did due diligence on trying to find the lowest cost here.
Well, I actually got a price from them to connect up stuff, which was, that's why I went out chopping for others.
So that's not the price that you came to us with on email?
No.
It sounds like Larry did some, made a number of calls and got a number of quotes.
Benoit Electric was by far and away the best price. But I'm not saying that we shouldn't go through the whole process again. I just doubt that you're going to find it any cheaper.
I guess it depends on whether or not we do want to go ahead and spend the additional cost to link the buildings together and upgrade the school at the same time.
Sounds like if we link the buildings together, that the school has like a $100,000 bill to, to upgrade.
Have to get into that.
And that's what Larry doesn't want to have.
Right now, what would happen is young.
I tend to agree, but just want to be clear. Right, that the only, the only reasonable option is to try to find a good standalone system for the community room and the library.
Yeah, which is what he's done.
And I gotta tell you, the standalone system that you've got priced out right now is top of the line. Best thing you're gonna get. It could be hooked up, so apparently you already have a, someplace that you, you call into like from the town garage. I don't know if you have anything at the town clerk's office or not.
We have one at the fire station.
At the town garage, it's monitored 24/7 by, well, whatever company we.
We hire.
Yeah, what I'm saying though, if you could have this picked up by that same company or it could be picked up by the company that we use, which is Hops, I believe. So that, those options would be, you know, open whatever you can negotiate or want to do. But it would be monitored 24/7 with a panel that would call out and do test calls every day to make sure that it's operational and all that kind of stuff.
So if we had a separate system here, the folks that do the monitoring for the school building, do you think that they would be willing to take this on too?
Oh, definitely.
Okay. I mean, we'd pay for it.
That's totally separate from the installation, that's just a separate contract.
That's a, yeah, annual contract.
Yeah, it's a yearly, yearly fee.
So the, I had one of the auditors recently ask me why we didn't go out to bid for the new truck. Yeah, I mean, we, lots of reasons why that, but this is going to be over the $8,000. Do we need to do that, or I mean, it's kind of our, it's a selective policy.
It's a purchasing policy.
But it is our policy, so if we decide that, that the due diligence has been done and there's several contacts and prices that have been accepted.
I would, yeah.
Do we have to worry about that? I'm not.
Yes, we do technically.
Well, technically.
Because, hang on a second, there's somebody in the waiting room.
Larry, could you provide the quotes that you've already received to the town?
I can, they, they would have to all be updated at this point. Nobody would care behind them because it's been months since we done. But I could easily get, if you want me to go ahead with that process, I can actually get them.
If you already have those contacts that might, and then, and then we're all.
We'd be covered?
Then we're covered.
Even though it's not a formal bid process?
Well.
I would feel good with it.
It's basically every available contractor in the region that's able to do the work. That seems like a pretty reasonable bid process.
Yeah, there's only a certain number of people that really install.
I was gonna say.
The installation, nothing to do with the monitoring.
No, but there's only a handful of installers.
Benoit Electric, for instance, they installed the whole system for the Capitol Building in Montpelier. Coffee roasters, you know, they know what they're doing.
I just want to ask this person to identify themselves.
Okay.
Susan.
So Susan, could you identify yourself?
Oh, no, I don't know how to do that.
Well.
Just say your name.
Just say your name. We can hear you.
Is the volume on?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, it's Anne Sawyer.
Okay.
Sorry, I thought it was off.
Well, yeah.
Anne Sawyer.
We just wanted to know who, who joined the meeting, that's all.
Anne Sawyer?
It's David Soder. It's David Soder.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay.
So, so. So Larry's agreed that he will send us updated quotes.
Okay.
And so we'll have those for comparison. Right, which sounds like.
Yeah, I can do that.
A reasonable next step and then we'll still have to.
Thank you.
I mean, obviously the, where it falls is that I oversee the school, which also is part of, this is part of our use. So that's where I became involved in it.
Yeah, we appreciate it, I mean, thank, thank you.
Yeah, that's fuzzy line there, sure is a pain for you.
Sorry for that.
Another complication that we've created.
Yeah, we just make trouble.
In general, I think this is a good idea and probably well past due.
So we would have to decide whether to put it in our budget or is this something that has to be done? I mean, our budget won't start until July.
I just, just want you to know that once I, once we have, the fire marshal comes again, I can just about guarantee you he's going to demand, you won't have a choice, you're gonna have to do it.
Well, I don't think that.
But I mean, like now or can we wait till next summer? I mean, there's probably going to be supply chain issues and all that stuff once we hire somebody.
But if, yeah, if we hire somebody and we have a contract, then the fire marshal's already going to be.
I think that that's up to you, I mean, as long as you're in the process, you're probably fine. Just as long as you know that.
It's gonna happen.
Contracts come in, Esther, you know, bids come in or whatever, and if you can, if they can sign a contract and have them hold it till then, that's one thing, but the prices are so erratic right now that it makes it difficult.
Yeah, if he comes again, you can send him to the town instead of having to deal with it.
Yeah, so it sounds like we agree that it has to be done, we just have to.
Let's review how we're gonna pay for it.
Let's review the bid and find out how we pay for it.
Right.
And I don't think we should make the library pay for it.
No, I don't personally, because technically. It's our, it's our building, so, I don't think that's fair.
And we don't have anything at the town office either, do we?
Not that I'm aware of.
Hypothetically, you'd be aware, miss.
There's a fire extinguisher?
Two, one upstairs, one downstairs.
Yeah, I'm sure it's tested all the time.
They'll have students in the building.
Right.
That, one of the biggest issues we have.
Yeah, we don't have like a back door, we don't have a lot of things.
Well, there are two entries, so that would make the fire marshal happy. Yep, there's that door there.
I think.
Oh, that you have at the town office.
Oh, at the town office.
There's a window you can jump out of.
Yeah, climb up on the toilet and jump out the window. Or there's always a bulkhead. Never mind.
But all of that is still on one side of the building.
True.
Right, not actually.
Look at one of those side windows by Route 14, they're pretty.
They're pretty big.
And chintzy. There's pretty good breeze coming through there.
Okay.
All right, so, so we're good. All right.
Larry's gonna get some updated numbers and we're gonna decide.
And we're gonna decide how to try to pay for it. Thank you.
Whether to put it in.
Appreciate it very much. Uh, okay. PFAS?
Hell, yeah. No, I was just trying to think there was another, another thing for the school, but you just said it, so.
Yeah, it is, it is a school anthem thing. This is the recognition of PFAS and PFOA water contamination in Woodbury School. I guess we're not the only school that's dealing with this right now within OSSU. But it's the one that is of obviously greater concern to our immediate families in the district. Larry, I don't know how much you have that you want to talk about with this, but.
It is in the early stages.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So I have a question for Larry, is this a program that the state is doing with all of the water systems for all the schools? That's what I thought.
Every school in the state has to be tested.
Right.
And unfortunately, our levels were just below the limit and creeped up and then creeped down and then came, suddenly came back and just went over the limit. The last true test.
Yeah, and do you have an understanding from anybody from the state about why this is happening?
Well, obviously it's a manmade issue. Created either from something, which is strange because of where the location is. But it could get into the groundwater and seep from quite a distance. So whether or not it comes down gradient from above, nobody knows. However, I can tell you that Joe and I have a meeting this Thursday with two representatives from the groundwater. Yeah, Protection Division here in Vermont. And so at that point, we'll probably find out quite a lot more. One of the people that's coming is just a preliminary discussion with us. Preliminary, they sent us an 82 page thank forms you have to fill out. So he's going to come and meet, just have some talk. And he's going to probably be the one from the state that does their investigation of what's happening and see if they can discover what's going on. So at some point in the near future, there will be much more information forthcoming.
And what's his name?
I can't see.
Oh, okay.
So they're.
Sorry.
They're gonna try to help figure out.
Definitely.
Well, that's nice, yeah, that's good.
Once again, it's a little difficult, Joe's a water systems operator now because I stopped doing that. But we're doing it through the school, but as you know, it's a town owned, owns the water source. So you'll all be involved, there's no doubt about it. We'll get the preliminary information, keep you up to speed the best we can with what's going on.
Any, the other schools under your jurisdiction now?
Luckily, not under my jurisdiction, but we have one other in the district, Crashberry.
Oh, oh, they've had a, yeah.
Their town.
Their whole town system, yeah.
And the weird thing is, is that they can't use the water at the school, but Al just can all use it.
Right, there's a different threshold for residential versus municipal versus schools.
If this was a residential, we'd still be able to use it.
That's what Joshua McCorn sent me.
Do you know if the state is planning to try to, you know, it sounds like they'll definitely be opening up cans of worms across the state, is there any kind of funding to help schools?
I don't believe that they have openly said what was going to be available yet. But I do know that there's been some discussions about, you know, what's going to be available and when and how it's going to help. I'm sure there is going to be, and how that's going to work out, whether it's landing more towards schools or, you know, if it's anybody in general, because it's all the schools that are being tested through this program. So I think it's, we're in a waiting pattern coming. The nice thing that we have going for us here is we don't prepare food here, it comes out from Harvick. So the only thing that is drinking water can be used for everything else.
So the thing, so hand washing, is that's still okay?
Everything is fine.
Okay.
We just need to provide the drinking water, which we've been doing with bottled water. But we've just done a contract with. Now I can't even name the company, I think it's actually the same company that, Staples, I think it is. But it's one of those companies anyways that are going to be providing bottled waters and the drinking water. So we'll have one out, we'll have one in the center between all the classrooms, one in the gym. And then for some reason or other, I have to admit, we sort of forgot about this. So we'll either continue, we'll either bring another one out to here or we will, we will stack furniture and some bottled water for the usage out here. Obviously, there's also a little bit of concern because of the amount of use, like with all the pickleball that goes on and everything, whether, you know, we may put up a sign asking them to please provide their own, you know, bring their own drinking water, whatever, because you could use that with bottled water pretty quickly.
Yeah, I know they're aware of the not, not drinking water.
Not drinking water.
Obviously, they have signs, yeah. They can bring their own, you know.
We're doing everything the state requires, we're, that all the notices are out, that's supposed to be out.
Can I add two things? One, I just talked to Lisa McCarthy, the principal here, and she also mentioned that she's actively has grants and other resources on her radar and is looking out for that kind of support. So she's, you know, right in it with everybody else in terms of the concern and understanding that the cost, you know, hopefully we can find some way of mitigating some of the costs. I also noticed and wanted to just give a shout out to Myrna, who's been bringing big mason jars of water from her home for the library when our kids come. You know, Myrna's always providing water for, for library patrons, so she's.
For, and so library patrons who wanted water would come get it from here?
Yeah, I mean, I think generally if you're, I mean, in my experience using the library, it's like, oh, fill up your water bottle, you know. And so she's been really great about having potable water for library patrons. So thank you to the library for being on top of that too.
So, that's a.
I think it's going to be, once we reach a certain point in this, it's going to be a, it's going to be involved with how the funding is going to happen. And if they can even find out where it's coming from, it may not be any way of cleaning it up. There is, there is technology now so that you can run it through a certain filters and situation and whatnot to make it work. Whether how expensive that would be compared to drilling a well and putting all the old valves whistles in, I have no idea at this point.
No one does.
So we just, that's why I say, I think we just need to see how this plays out, working with the state. I do believe that you're going to find there will be substantial funding forthcoming, but with the state, you'd never know. It depends a lot on how many, how many of these issues come up. How are they going to spread that money out, I think? And we have been, we're already becoming, beginning the process of being involved with an engineering firm to help us figure this out as well.
Oh. You found one that has a water specialist or?
Oh, I've dealt with all.
Okay.
Yeah. Run a number of water systems and.
Oh, yeah.
With the elementary school area, I oversaw for 20 years or so. We built, we had helders on that system as well. We separated that off with the state, one firm that I worked with built a new well.
So you've given up all those?
Yep.
All that extra work, yeah?
Seventy years old now, I'm not gonna keep doing it forever.
It's hard to work when you're more than 70.
Thank you so much, Larry.
Yeah, thank you, very helpful.
Anytime we need information or if you want a question.
So it looks like we don't have anything we need to be doing now, except to be aware.
We will keep you informed whenever we come up with.
Okay, great, thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Take care.
Do you want to talk a little bit about your own concerns that you shared the other night at the town commission meeting?
I think that Larry has everything by hand. I've been in touch with Joe, who Larry just mentioned. We have all the data, I sent it to you all, I sent it to the planning commission. So all the data that is publishable, we have for Woodbury. The links that came through that email that I forwarded to you all. And maybe we can put that on the town website as well. Can't really, if people want to actually have access to it.
Did you just do that recently or?
No, it's the email I sent to you guys earlier this week.
Okay, I'll have to look for it.
But I can send it again, and then maybe I'll send it and we can post it.
Yep.
Which would be great, then people can have some data to go along with the warnings. I've, I spoke to the head of VD, VTDEC DWG WDP. Oh, okay, yells those guys, yeah.
You forgot the A and R part.
Yeah, no, it's not A and R.
Oh, you're kidding me.
No, I know, there's no A and R in there.
Oh, geez.
Yeah, and.
Short for what?
I don't even remember. DC, it's a division of DC.
Okay.
And he and I talked about exactly what Larry was dealing with, which is that they're really at the start of trying to figure out what sort of source issues are going on with this. And gave me some information, which I haven't forwarded yet, about what the standards are that they're using for municipalities versus school systems versus private wells. My question to him was, can we find money to have? Because if you do a standard drinking water test, you pay 15 bucks or whatever, it doesn't cover any of these constituents. Can we find some money to actually help with that? The answer was no. But, from the state. But it doesn't mean that we can't do something about it. But it doesn't mean that we can't do something about it on our own. But people will need to be aware of it before they even know what to test for. So, yes.
You mean providing resources for private citizens to be able to test their.
Their own water.
Resources.
Yeah. The only reason that we know that there's an issue is because of the testing here.
Right.
Because they test for it and you don't.
We don't, and we just, our household just did standard water testing. Like, we have our well tested every five, you know, whatever it is. We do like the standard test. And then we do the expanded, like, basically everything that's offered, including radon, like, every five years or whatever. And this test wasn't even available.
No.
To, as a residential.
Yeah, so that's what my concern that I addressed with them was.
It would be really interesting to know about the wa, you know, our outdoor water sources that get a lot of use. Have those tested at some point.
Anyway, so I'm learning more. I will keep, okay, keep the select board as where that is possible. I talked to the state geologist, who was quite helpful. And this was about having someone from D E C come and give an explanation of P F O A and P F A S contaminants to the town broadly.
That's great.
So that we just are aware of, you know, what the different types of contaminants are, how they're potentially generated, why we could do this and be far away from an industrial location where most of the places we've recognized this in the state of Vermont are associated with industrial facilities or past industrial locations. But it is an airborne contaminant, and it's in just about everything, is the short answer, from floor wax to the coating on your jacket. So it would be good if the, if, if we could be made aware.
Chris came before the planning commission last week with this concern. And the planning commission has agreed to host knowledgeable people to come and just do an informative meeting for people in the town. And that, that'll probably happen sometime soon. We're kind of waiting for Chris to contact some people and see if they would be willing to come.
I am trying to put it together as fast as possible, so.
Thank you.
And we're thinking we would probably use the school gym to have this informative meeting because I would assume that some people would be concerned about this, but probably more than this room could hold. And the town hall's too cold. For a while, anyway, so.
I have a question. Would the select board like me to reach out to the Craftsbury school rep to find out any information about how they're handling it in their community? And, or would that be of help to you or just kind of, it sounds like you're really on it? And you probably have a lot of the information. Maybe they're happy to.
But they've been, but they've been working on this for more, probably more than six months, maybe less than a year.
Craftsbury?
Yeah, right? They have a friend who's on the select board there and they have.
I don't know their timeline.
Yeah, but anyways, it's been ongoing, so it would be nice to know what they're.
Sure.
What they've decided, what they've found out in the meantime, yeah.
Would you like me to connect you directly?
That would be wonderful.
To the chair of their board?
I'd be thrilled. I appreciate that very much.
And I certainly trust Larry and Joe to.
Yeah.
For what they're doing here.
For what they're working. They're on it, for sure. Okay. So next on the agenda, wow, look at that. On schedule.
Right on, right on the money.
Review status of ARPA fund applications and potential approvals.
Well, I have summarized what we've done so far. For you, Officer Michael. Anybody else want one? Here, you can have a, give one to Robin. You have a good one to Anne.
Thank you.
Yeah. In the far right-hand corner, our far-right-hand column is a total of what we've actually approved so far. Sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. And then the rest of the stuff is still pending. The both, I think we wanted to work on the town and office and town hall witherization projects, but we don't have wicked firm numbers for those.
No.
Quite yet.
Those are still a little bit wishy-washy, I'm afraid. As much as I'd love to commit to both of those things, because we've been talking about it forever.
So we had one former road commissioner who was going to come in tonight, or rather zoom in tonight.
Yeah, I don't see him waiting.
And talk about whether or not some of this money could be used for, towards a grader.
Right.
So hopefully he'll, or somebody will come up with some money, I mean, some numbers as far as how much that would cost.
Should have dragged Alfie into this while I was here. Maybe we can talk to him. He has a pretty good sense for this.
Yeah.
Because the last quotes that we had are pretty antiquated at this point.
The money has to be obligated by the end of two thousand twenty-four, but it doesn't have to be spent until the end of two thousand twenty-six. So there is time to put that money away and, and build a fund to pay for the rest of it. If we decide to put some of that there. I mean, the ARPA committee did, you know, they sort of made a second deadline, which is May of next year for people who had ideas that they didn't have at the time that this first round of applications was accepted. But, you know.
Are there any that, that it would be prudent to, to discuss and approve or disapprove at this point that?
Well, installation in the town office was a pretty formal quote. Granted, it's.
It was, yeah.
It, it's, it's old now, and I'm sure that that price.
We have to find another person.
We can't use the same person. So, I mean, I mean, I think that that should be high on the list. I think that that was, was prioritized by the committee. My recollection at least.
And I did notice in their survey that roads actually came out first. And broadband came out second.
There's plenty of other money available for roads. That was, that's what I've always.
That's for equipment?
Not for equipment, no. No.
I mean, the, the survey questions about roads were kind of, you know, sketchy, but I think roads or road equipment is one way to spread the benefit over a large number of taxpayers.
Yeah, pretty much everybody, yeah.
So, yeah, our, our little town hall committee is kind of at a standstill. It would be nice to find somebody who would like to be a clerk of the works and kind of take all these different ideas and put them together and start getting some plans.
She's looking directly at you.
What? Who's that?
Sorry, Diana.
I was thinking of somebody with some, I don't know if you're a contractor, but somebody with some kind of that kind of experience. I mean, you know, like a Larry Elder, which there aren't enough of. Because, yeah, yeah, I'm not doing it and.
Do you think Larry Joe would be interested in doing it?
I don't, no.
No?
No, I know she wouldn't.
What about Lizzie?
Who, Lizzie Higgins?
Lizzie Higgins.
I don't know how busy she is with her.
I don't either. I'm sure she's terribly busy, but.
Yeah, she would have.
She would have the knowledge to help us with this.
We do have a nice study. We have two, yeah, we did, we do have a study by the Jan Lewandowski, who's a historical buildings expert. We don't really have much from our energy auditor, but we can always get another energy auditor in there. Although I always thought that it's not going to be a project that saves energy. It's going to be a project that helps us use more energy, but use it more efficiently, so.
At least we could use it in the winter time.
Yeah, that's what I mean. It's going to be using, it's more about making the building usable than about energy conservation.
I mean, we do have an audit from the contractor through Efficiency Vermont.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Which another contractor could work from. And Efficiency Vermont is fine with that.
Did you get my email about the window project in Craftsbury?
Yeah, and actually, when, when the first step with the, all of the town buildings with this energy stuff was an assessment, an energy assessment from Efficiency Vermont. And the woman who came and did that suggested that, that we contact this, there's a group that will actually come and help and do these windows.
That's why I sent that email on to you, because you've said that before. And this Kevin Gregoire, I think his name is, from, from Craftsbury. I, I can't figure out whether he works for somebody or if he just does this on his own. But he said he would be interested in helping us get started on something.
Okay.
But I don't know who's going to follow him.
Program that they're, trying to remember, her first name was Jennifer, can't remember the last name. But she said there's also a program where somebody comes and does like a training. So there'd be different people from the town.
That's the person that, yeah, that's the person from Craftsbury.
Town folks would build, build the windows. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that would, that would be one way to, to tighten up.
Well, I asked him whether those, those kinds of homemade kind of windows. Interior storms would be something that could be done in like a four-by-four foot format. I was guessing at the size of those windows at the town hall. Because they're larger than usual.
Pretty good sized.
Yeah.
Maybe more like three by forty by sixty.
I was thinking about half, I mean, one, one section. Anyways, so somebody will.
It wouldn't be that hard to do.
We had a town energy coordinator, they could have that for their first project. Well, anyways, so that's, anyways, it was a positive response. You say what they usually do is they work in the spring to take measurements and then they plan for some time in the fall to actually get together and make the windows. And the number of volunteers that they had working on this in Craftsbury was amazing. They, they have a big building, I guess, down at the, the ski center there, Craftsbury Outdoor Center, that they let them use. And they.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure the space in the town hall would probably be large enough.
So anyways.
Okay, well, that's.
Keep following up, yeah. I don't see any of these other, other projects as being imminent.
What about the lost, I mean, the library is asking for lost fundraising revenue. And the friends of the Woodbury Elementary School are, have a much smaller amount that they're asking for similar. And I'm sure they could use that lost revenue at any point in time.
Yeah, I think they should have asked for a little more. I think we should give them a thousand dollars.
Yeah. So those are things that we could, we could approve.
So Sarah, I think, came to the meeting and talked about what the library could use the money for. She talked about eBooks and I forget what else.
Programs is.
It sounds like they would have to, should have a plan. What do you know about that, Steve?
I don't recall, I don't recall. I know we were, we were, we canceled due to COVID, excuse me, the pie breakfast three years running. We did hold this summer during Old Town Day, silent auction. Which we had some success.
Well, this is what the app, the application says, due to COVID nineteen, the library has not been able to hold their annual pie breakfast and silent auction for three years. We plan to hold a silent auction portion, uh, summer twenty twenty-two. Woodbury Community Library will use the funds to reopen expanded hours, which I was just told is not going to happen, and cover salary increases for the next few years. In addition, we have plans to reinstate monthly programs for adults, teens, and children. These funds will also help cover costs for the eBook program. Is that something that's very popular?
I don't, I don't know about, I don't know about that.
Okay.
Well, for younger folks, eBooks are much more commonly used and.
The what?
Good old, I mean, if you're younger.
Oh.
eBooks are a pretty big deal.
Really?
We use them almost daily in our household. Just for our kids, like audiobooks that the kids can listen to, that we can check out from the library.
Oh.
It's a very nice service. So, um, expanding that collection, I imagine, might be something the library's talking about.
I don't think they were anywhere on this. It's nice to drop into it and think about it, but.
Well, so maybe we could make a plan on how to, to get somewhere on some of these things. Should we?
Well, the digitizing land records, Brandy said at the meeting that this is not the money, this is not the amount. She said they were, this is only half the amount, and they can't do the half, the twenty years. They won't do that, the contractor, so it's actually fifty thousand dollars.
So the town would have to come up with a twenty-five K match. Like a fifty-fifty match kind of thing.
Or they would ask for fifty thousand dollars from ARPA.
Okay.
But I'd like to, I'd like to wait and see what we could do that might help the whole town.
Well, I think that there are a couple of things that we can, we can try to do. The first is highway was prioritized clearly by people who actually voted on some of these.
I have the survey results here.
Highway was, was high on that list, and there's no highway in here whatsoever. And if, if, if we think that a grader is something that needs to, we need to start spending towards, well, then this is the time to do it. But we need to hear it from someone who's knows better than we do.
Yeah.
So I think that that's a first step, to talk to, talk to Chuck.
And he was going to.
And Chuck was going to do something about it.
Yeah, I don't know why he's not here tonight, but.
Which is okay. We'll figure it out.
But we go, talk to him and ask him to, you know, get some numbers together so we can at least start.
Actually.
Well, Alpia can work on that, too.
Yeah.
Find, you know, get an estimate of how much longer this twenty-year-old grader is going to last and how much it would cost to replace it.
Who you ask about that. What kind of grader we're looking for, so.
Yeah.
So I think that that's a priority that we have to deal with. If we really do want to digitize land records, I think that we need to talk to Brandy and get a actual price. This twenty-five thousand dollars is too wishy-washy.
Well, it's actually Robin's job. Brandy put together the application, so her name's on it. But Robin's the one that's in charge of land records.
So what's your opinion?
Yeah, what is your opinion on land records?
I think it's the modern thing to do, myself. Because we still have researchers that are coming from Bridleboro, Millbury, where they can pull it up online and will still get the income from it.
But that's not going to save anybody any money. It's not like the lawyers are going to charge less to their clients for doing a title search. I probably shouldn't say that, but I don't, I don't believe that there, it's going to save anybody in Woodbury any money, but.
I wonder if there are any funding sources for small municipalities to do that. I can't even think of one.
I don't even know where to start for something like that.
A lot of towns are using ARPA money for, for this.
But the twenty-five K really isn't the right number.
It's fifty, fifty thousand.
It's fifty thousand. Is that, is that the short answer? Is that we're looking at double this?
It's closer to the fifty than the twenty-five, yes.
I do know, I can make a couple of calls to ask people if there is funding.
For?
Yeah, I can check with some of the town clerks.
Digitizing land records.
Town clerks meet Wednesday night in Woke. They're going to have the, um. Town clerks meet Wednesday night in Waukegan. They're going to have the head, what's his name? Cemetery person at this meeting.
Oh, cool.
Their cemetery person or a state?
The state one. What's his name? Healy.
Oh, the one from Montpelier. Yeah, Patrick Healy. So are some of the, any of the?
No, this is for clerks and officials.
Okay. No cemetery people, huh? Okay. You can come home and tell them about it.
And I can check with some of them to see if they know if there's, if there's any grants out there other than ARPA for land records.
I, I, somebody at the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission might know something. So I, I can, I can call them if you'd like.
Okay.
I've got a meeting tomorrow with those folks.
Okay, go to Tac.
Tac. I can ask around a bit.
Most towns seem to have paid for it themselves, or some, I mean, the larger towns have been doing this for years. I'm sure they have an annual allocation and after they do the first round.
You got a little catching up to do.
Yeah, plus there would be, in addition to the first bringing up to speed, there's going to be annual costs, additional.
All true.
Well, okay.
All right. So we need more data for town hall weatherization and maintenance. That number is unclear. Town office insulation issues, we've already talked about those.
And I'm remembering for the town office that I was going to contract, I did contact Efficiency Vermont. And it's okay for us to contact other contractors. And I said that I would do that. I haven't done it yet. So I just made a note in red pen.
Yeah, it's probably not going to happen this winter anyways.
At this point, no, but we could get something lined up for next, next year. And we could make the strong windows. Because that was one of the things that the person who did the assessment says that, you know, if you're going to, you know, to have a heat pump or whatever, and to do the insulation, it doesn't make sense to do all that and not have the windows have some kind of storage system. And she suggested us just making your own, which would make a difference.
Because those big windows that look out onto Route 14, that's where I have the typewriter now, and there is such a draft that comes through there. My hands are frozen by the time I'm done.
So it's not, I'm sure there's more than a draft. It's radiation for being that close to the, you know. Drafts can, can be addressed with weather stripping, but.
Yeah, just the glass.
But just being so close to the glass, that's your body heat.
I'm sure there's a breeze, too, though.
It's cold.
Yeah. And those windows probably came with weather stripping, but they're probably 30 years old, so maybe they just need to be replaced. But usually, energy auditors don't suggest that. Because windows are not big energy savers, because you're still going to have a big piece of glass there.
If you have a window.
You might have a R3 instead of a R1, but it's still not going to be a big, a big saver. I always wanted to get some nice, hold some nice shades, you know, some nice heavy.
That would be nice.
Rolled shades instead of those, you know, those funky slats that we have.
That don't, that don't buy that well. Okay. Any other business to mention or further updates that people need to bring up? Okay, so I will take a motion to adjourn Woodbury Select Board meeting for November 28th at 7:58 PM.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.